Go ahead and call the council meeting in order. Roll call.
Has Evan here today?
No. Schmansky?
Here.
Way?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Wenzel?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Kuhn?
Here.
First on the agenda is approval of the minutes from previous council meetings. We've got one on October 8th and one on October 30th.
Move to the second.
Motion is second to approve previous minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is citizens forum. You'll see anything, then we have a community foundation presentation. Mr. Curtis.
Believe it or not, it was just two months shy of ten years ago that we started with this project.
Ten years already?
It's got, 2004, January 2004, we had our first meeting and began the process that culminated in fundraising and getting the building up, and of course you're all aware of the grant that was part of that. And as the funds came in, they were channeled through the community foundation, at that time Community Foundation of Southwood County, and then Greater Southwood County, and eventually encouraged Community Foundation. As the construction started, Joe would accumulate a bunch of bills and submit a voucher, and they would, would pay the city, and the city paid the bills, and then Joe collected from them. We had remaining in that account, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Now these funds were, have accumulated over, over the years, some of it as recently as a month ago, and, and the last of it is recently as a month ago. But the deal with the community foundation was that this money always had to be used for, primarily for that project, or some other project that benefited the same, the same citizenry. So, I know that you have some projects left, I've heard that there's talk of an underground sprinkling system over there, that would really beautify the place, and talk of a fence. We, if we, we obviously have no input on that anymore, because this is a city's building. But here's the, here's the last check, that account has been, retired is the, is the correct word, at the, at the community foundation. It can be reopened if there are additional contributions, and we would hope that there, that there still will be. If we were to have a suggestion regarding the use of that fund, we, I don't know how seriously that fence is needed over there, we'd really like to, like to see a sprinkler system over there, but that, that's your decision, obviously. We also have pending, a, a sign that is supposed to be going up in, in front, and for various reasons that has gotten delayed a couple of times, but, but the money is, has been set aside for that, so it will not need to come out of the twenty-one thousand.
Oh, that's, that's separate?
That is separate, that is, it's still being held at the, at the credit union.
Credit union.
In a checking account. Once that is done, once the sign is done and that is paid for, then the balance of that money will also be turned over to the city, on behalf of the community center. Just for your information, after approving these items we just talked about, the board of directors has officially folded. I could continue to monitor the receipts if you, if there are any, if that's your desire, otherwise I can turn it over to, to Joe. But, we're officially out of business now, and you have the funds, minus what's at the credit union yet.
Who is going to continue the pursuit of the sign? Is that something?
I'm willing to do that, I know Bill is involved with it.
We've got, oh, I've been working with Jerry, so we've got it all organized.
Okay, well if you're still interested, why don't you go, just please keep on going for it.
Yeah.
We'll work together.
You know, you, you, you put all your heart and soul into this, you've got a beautiful building out of it, let's keep rocking, because it's.
No better person to do it.
It sounds like it's getting real good use to.
Oh, yes. Nothing but freezes.
So thanks for the support of the common council.
You guys deserve a lot of credit.
You bet.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
And as well as the board of directors and all the committee members.
Can you, can you name them off, do you remember them all, Jerry?
Well, the board of directors included, I thought I saw Larry.
He's not here today.
Larry, Larry Krupsek, Patty, of course, who was the president of that board, Rob Sigler, Terry Shirts, John Ritchie, Doc Thompson was on it, and.
Dr. Pete?
Pete Stein, oh, Dr. Pete Steinhoffel. And on the, on the committee members, they're on a, on a plaque out there, but, golly, I hate to start listing them, because I'm afraid I'll miss some.
Well, I was trying to say, I don't want to put you on the spot, yeah, we, we concede it.
But there have been, there were a lot of people that, that were involved over time. So, it's thanks to the hard work of, of the whole group that got done, and, and plus the grant money that we.
Thanks to Dave Boebi.
So that's all I have, unless you have some other, other questions.
I think, behalf of not only this council, but previous council, I'd like to thank you both, and the rest of the committee for all of the work that, that was done. Like you said, it turned out, it was a very nice and well-used building, and we've already discussed, the, I was under the impression that the sign was coming out of this money too, that was kind of the number one goal of the projects that, that have been discussed, and then, number two was going to be redoing of the lawn and installing the underground sprinkling system, and that's hopefully something that will get done in spring, so we can get that redone.
That'd really dress the place up.
Yeah.
Normally on city stuff, I don't, I am not a big advocate of underground sprinklers, this one needs it, this one really needs it, just because of the, the use of it, you know, with the, with the weddings and the, everything that goes on, the outside weddings, you know, it's just, it's gonna, it's definitely.
The lawn just never took hold.
Right, right. And it's not going to, you know, with our, with our summers, you know, it's either too wet or too dry, and that's where we can regulate it, and as long as the sprinklers don't turn on while somebody's having a wedding, we're gonna be alright.
I would like to ask a question, I know way back during the, during the construction process, and there was talk of the need for a fence.
You're still.
Seemed unclear whether that was really necessary, have there been issues that a, that a fence would have prevented?
I've been talking to the, some of the neighbors, in fact, one of them is my daughter, and they would like something, not necessarily a fence fence, but something just when it's up, it's, you know, cars pulling in, pulling out, you know, for stuff like that. Is there a need for a security fence? No. It's just something, a barrier, or a.
Edges or.
Edges.
Tree line or edges.
Primarily the headlights and stuff.
Yeah, the headlights is all it is.
That's, that's up to you fellows, but I.
It'd be, yeah, I, I.
I always kind of wondered, and we took great steps to make sure there was no noise, and I'm, I've never heard any noise complaints.
There is no, it's not the noise complaint, there is no noise complaints, even on the best parties, however you want to call it, it's just, there is no, there hasn't been any, I, you guys are the area, you haven't heard anything.
I have, I have not, I mean, I've lived, you know, two lots over or whatever, but, and I never heard anything in the building itself, once well.
I would have thought the most likely complaints would have come from Wood Avenue, and if you haven't heard from them, probably no problem.
And it's just they're, they're just wondering what we can get, like, oh, like headlights, barrier types, they're not even, they don't even want the fence, you know.
It was intended when they, we started the project, that the building would be self-sufficient, that the rents would pay from the staff, is that happening?
It's getting closer.
Yeah.
There was thirty-seven out of fifty-two weeks, the place was booked last year.
Oh.
Weekend, we're doing fine.
I think we did pretty good last year, didn't we?
We're doing pretty good.
And this year, I think we're, we're pretty darn, pretty darn near.
We're adding stuff along, now we just approved, or tonight we'll approve putting in cable into three of the rooms so far.
Oh.
So that people can, if they want to rent a room for a football game, last year, I guess we'd have had a cable or a big screen, the ability to put up a big screen, we could add one heck of a party book for the, for the Super Bowl.
Oh.
So, there's, you know, people are thinking up stuff up that we're not thinking up, they're coming in.
Jacoby's sponsoring a pool tournament there.
Oh, he is, he's bringing in tables.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Be a four-day tournament in the middle of January.
And he intends, from my understanding, that it tends to be a yearly thing?
Yep.
So every year?
Wow.
There's, there's plenty, plenty going in there.
Good. We, we hoped it would get you, strangely enough, I think there's still a lot of people that don't know that building exists.
There is. You're, you're correct.
Yeah, but I think it's, slowly, the word's getting out, and I don't know about the bookings and stuff.
A lot of senior programs.
Yeah.
I mean, that's helping. Twice a week, exercise class, arthritis classes, strong bones.
Our coordinator there does a very good job on that.
Joyce?
Joyce, Joyce and Dan are remarkable.
Mayor of Hardaway, Wisconsin, come down too for a, what do they call that?
Uh, business after hours.
Business after hours, that helped a lot, got the word out a little bit more. In fact, we got a couple of, a couple of people that helped us with the, with the business after hours, got bookings, didn't they?
Just a comment, if I may, I was reading some of the committee reports here, and the stuff that was being, being proposed, and, and when you were talking about the internet going in over there, and the lines, I noticed that there was a Sigler mentioned, and that would be Rob Sigler, S-I-G-L-E.
Did I spell that wrong? That might have been Brad spelling.
I don't know who did it, but I did notice it in here.
That's what I was wondering if I spelled that right, it's Rob.
So I don't know if this is a permanent record, or.
It will be after, when we change it to Sigler.
You might want to, you might want to consider changing that.
There ain't no consideration, that one will be changed. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you, Jerry.
I think you gotta give him a big hand.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
What I would like is a recommendation to accept that check, and then transfer it into the community center outlet account.
A move.
Second.
That way it's in that account, and it's designated for the building.
Great.
And you can use it for whatever we need there, whether there are projects, so. So start tracking, Phil.
We already have two estimates on sprinkler systems.
Good.
And I'll, I'll make sure that I have those involved with that sign.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, it'll do. Way?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Thank you very much, for all the hard work, and everything turned out very nice.
Good to have it done.
Okay, going into committee reports, committee of the whole. Two of them, one October 9th, and one November 7th. Move that they be adopted as printed, sorry. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Both. No action really needed on either one of them, the October 9th one was for the business after hours with the Hardaway, Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, and November 7th was joint meeting with the library board. We'll go into Ways and Means.
Ways and Means meeting was held, uh, 11, 12, 13, at 6:15. Members of, move 6:15 minutes to the red flag.
Here's a motion, a second on the floor to approve the minutes as granted from Ways and Means, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Members present, Gus Royak, Robert Phillips, Garrett Coon, Brad Hamilton, also in attendance were Mayor Elmarco, Phil Hartley, and Melissa, Ray, Ray, Hardaway, Wisconsin. And, number one, we recommend pay Hardaway, Wisconsin, two thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars, to the Chamber of, for annual dues. Two, we like to know the bills. Three, recommend license to serve malt beverages and intoxicating liquor through Kelly Schwan, K and D Bar and Grill, Alicia Rodriguez, The Edge, and Mary Bell.
Michelle.
Michelle Hill, Best in Town. Four, recommend purchase, two-page ad, Wisconsin Area Visitor Guides, fifteen hundred dollars. Five, recommend Terry P.P., remain supplier for gas and diesel, for city trucks. Any questions?
Just could we hold four out, please?
We can hold four out. Recommend for adoption, one, three, and five.
There's a motion, a second on the floor to adopt items one, three, and five of Ways and Means meeting, roll call vote. Way?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Way?
Yeah, number five?
Number four.
Number four?
Just go ahead and roll down, I just want to.
Oh, okay, recommend for adoption, number four?
Second. Motion, a second on the floor to adopt item number four of the Ways and Means meeting, roll call vote. Kuhn?
No.
Schmansky?
No.
Way?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wenzel?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hey!
We got the mayor on the stick.
I'll recommend for adoption of that, I'll give you. Next is Public Works. Larry's not here, Bob, you want to do it?
Public Works held one meeting on Wednesday, November 6th, 2013, at 9 o'clock, in the Decusia Council Chambers, move to adopt the minutes as printed?
Second. There's a motion, a second on the floor to adopt the Public Works minutes as printed, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Decusia Common Council, a public works meeting was held on Wednesday, November 6th, 2013, at 9:00 AM in the Decusia Council Chambers. Members present, Larry Krupsek, Robert Schultz, August Royak, Garrett Coon, also in attendance were Bill Caperly, DBW Director Lee Emmer from MSA, Mayor Elmarco, and Bill Caperly Jr. Item one, discuss wastewater treatment plan issues and updates. Item two, discuss water issues and updates. Recommend denying water adjustment to 109 Fourth Street, Decusia. Three, recommend monthly water and sewer billings in 2014. Four, item four, recommend delinquent water sewer bills not be added to the real estate tax bills. Item five, discuss Village of Port Edward's newsletter. Item six, discuss 2013 road project. Item seven, add an update by MSA. Item eight, discuss school schedule for wastewater treatment and different grant applications for future road projects. Item nine, recommend purchase of truck topper to the water department pickup for approximately one thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars. Recommend for adoption.
One, one comment on that? Item number four, I think we agreed that they would go on this year yet, and then it would start in 2014, that they would no longer go on the tax.
Sure it stated 2014.
Okay.
Can I ask, why?
Because by putting that on the tax rule, we're, that ties up the money, we don't have access to the money to operate, and we've got one that's, was it six thousand dollars, that we need to operate that department, and it's twelve months out before we get it.
Okay, so we would, we would just go aggressively pursue that question?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where, because, that's where, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, so I was, my thought, my thought is that, one of the reasons we did raise the, the water bills were to, because we had to have the revenue, and.
Hmm, yeah, it's not, we're not collecting, we're gonna collect it upfront, sooner, so.
It'd be really 2015 though, wouldn't it, because I mean, the tax bills that are going out, will be for, you know, effective for 14.
So 2013 tax bills are.
Alright, okay, then.
Men's name of the 2014 tax bills are, will be issued next, just.
Alright, okay.
Okay, help me out, recommendation for two, three, four, and nine.
Okay, thank you.
How much was that topper? The topper was about eighteen forty-five? Eighteen hundred dollars for a truck topper?
That's a.
Now, now, just got the side, so you can have your tools organized.
You had, that, rack was excluded on that, too, right?
Yes. Rack and area for the ladders and everything.
Side racks, it's not just a topper like you and I would have, like a construction top, yeah, it's not a.
We could fight.
I, I kind of, like, there's two, and then I found out.
Terrible headprints. Recommend for adoption, items two, three, four, and nine.
Second. There's a motion, a second on the floor to adopt items two, three, four, and nine of the Public Works meetings, roll call. Schmansky?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Next is public safety.
Public safety at one meeting, motion to accept the minutes as written.
There's a motion, a second to accept the minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
The Honorable Mayor, members of the Decusia Common Council, Public Safety Committee meeting was held Tuesday, November 5th, 2013, at 5:30 PM in the Decusia Council Chambers. Members present, Terry Schmansky, Chairman Brad Hamilton, Secretary Larry Krupsek, and Robert Wenzel, also in attendance were Garrett Coon, Gus Royak, Fire Chief Mike Conrady, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Ryan Schmidt, Don Harnish, Ambulance Chief Ken Moody, Assistant Ambulance Chief, and Police Chief Sean Woods. Number one, recommend amending the traffic code as followed, D change section to Cedar, and E, South Section Street to City Limits, ten thousand pounds, and three, and their weight limit, ten nations. Number two, recommends Southwood County Humane Society contract for seven thousand one hundred dollars for 2014. Number three, recommend training administrative assistant from Amist Court, software in Madison, two days with one night hotel. Number four, recommend hiring Stephanie Bush, Mark Kane, Lucas Stafflet, Tori Lloyd, and Taylor Quinnall for the ambulance department. Number five, discuss ambulance remodel project we'll look at in a future meeting. Number six, fire department received three thousand dollars on a fifty-fifty grant from the DNR, and a six thousand grant from Project Lifesaver. Number seven, fire department now has nine personnel trained in swift, swift water rescue. Any questions?
Terry, could we amend, please, the council number three, to two-night hotel stay? Two nights? Yeah.
That's, and, yeah, we never finished that conversation, whether it was one night or two nights, because I know, I think that second night she says to stay late for a meeting or whatever it is.
Well, the first morning is, it starts bright and early, so I'd just like to have her there the night before.
I would, I'd have no problem with that.
Okay, with that correction?
Hotel?
Yeah. Recommend one, two, three, and four. Second. There's a motion, a second on the floor to approve the, the adoption of items one, two, three, and four of the Public Safety meetings, roll call vote. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Okay, next is property recreation, human affairs.
Honorable Mayor, members of the Decusia Council, Property Recreation, Human Affairs had one meeting, and made motion to amend the note, the minutes, for number one, the misspelling, uh, named it the Ziegler Room, it should be the Siegler Room, is that correct?
Yep.
I just like Siegler.
I don't understand why they came up, that should have, that should have been corrected in there, but.
Also, wondered if I, if we should have had the grant approval number one in here?
That was done in the previous meeting.
Yeah. We approved it in there, but did we, did we have to approve it through the state, did we?
What?
For the, the, uh, business improvement grant?
For that five thousand?
Yeah.
No, we, we did that once, we did that, we did that.
For the motorcycle shop, I just.
Yeah.
No, we're okay, right?
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I, I missed, missed seeing that it wasn't on there, and I was insurance, but we're okay. So, make a motion, accept the minutes as amended for the Siegler misspelling.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve the minutes as corrected for Property Recreation and Human Affairs meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Honorable Mayor, members of the Decusia Common Council, Property Recreation, Human Affairs had a meeting on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2013, at 5:30 PM in the Decusia Council Chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairman Brad Hamilton, Secretary Emmett Peterson, and Terry Schmansky. Also in attendance were Mayor Elmarco, Department of Public Works Director Bill Caperly, Christina Niprath, Garrett Coon, Bob Schultz, Brandon Jacoby, and Dan Schmidt.
That should be Tammy Niprath.
She told me Krista. Where would I get Krista? Terrible, it's just plain terrible, well, if you take the Z and flip it around, it's an S, so we're okay there, that's what the problem around that one.
I think there was motion to suspend.
Yeah. Keep, go, keep five hours from me, that, this one is terrible, boy, I tell you.
All in favor?
For the wonder, I got somebody else's glass on it.
Put the letter, letter in your mail.
Letter in my mailbox.
So, number one, we recommend installation of cable in the Cranberry Hall, the Siegler Room, and the Paper City Savings Room at the community center. Recommend purchasing two TVs for the two small rooms for approximately three hundred dollars each. Number three, recommend donating the use of the community center for a pool tournament that will be held January 16th through the 19th, 2014. Number four, recommend updating the grant program to encourage purchasing materials and services from the Decusia businesses. Number five, man update on our recreation projects that include ice rink, basketball courts. The base course is down, and we will be able to have, we will have the area available for ice skating this, this winter, and we will be doing the blacktop in the spring. Make a motion, recommend the adoption of number one, two, three, and four.
Clear. There's a motion, a second on the floor to adopt items one, two, three, and four of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs meeting, roll call. Way?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Nothing else on your old business, moving to new business? opposed? Next is the ambulance department's monthly report.
Aye.
second. Motion, a second for the ambulance department, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Fire Department's monthly report.
Aye.
motion, a second for the monthly report from the Fire Department, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Fire Department's monthly report.
Aye.
motion, a second for the monthly report from the Fire Department, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Building inspectors' monthly report.
Aye.
second.
I do have a question on that. Okay, just for my information. I can't find it, we, Bob and I were talking, we found two of them for a hundred thousand dollars for a North Street project. Or, excuse me, section, North Section Street project.
It appeared to be a building.
I was, we were wondering what's going on and I, I can't, I don't know.
Jason, that is gross.
That would be their...
Uh, Jason, oh, gross.
And then down here, Jason gross here too.
For the addition, yeah.
Six oh one North Section.
Well, if you look on the second page, and I'm looking, my, my, I must have rolled them. It says something about early start.
One's a pass, one hundred, one's a pass, four thirty-four, I don't know what that means.
Should've, Chris, Chris Gold or daycare or what?
One of them's for the house over here, Brad.
Six oh one North Section.
That would be the one that, uh, like that's the one that burned, wasn't it?
That's the drive to burn down there. Yeah.
Yeah, six oh one North.
Oh, okay. I just wondered what it was, that's what it is.
They had two different permits.
Gross.
Gross. Gross, yeah, the gross, I have it, one's, one says addition, one says how to start. What's early start then?
They needed an early start so they could get in there and start construction.
Oh, it's just to get going, to get it going. Well, we were wondering if it was, uh, it looked like a, uh, early start, like a daycare, early start, a daycare.
We did a date for a daycare.
Yeah.
No, we, we, Kevin and I talked and we did a, uh, early start to get them going, to keep them late.
That's just fine.
That's all.
It was just a co, comment, I, you know.
Right.
In other words, uh, we were thinking, well, they're gonna have to get a C O P and all this other stuff, they...
Well, that's what it is.
Excellent.
Second for that. Oh, yeah. Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is community center monthly report.
Aye.
second. Motion, a second for the community center, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the bills.
Did we have a report?
No, he, she, he didn't get it to me yet.
Alright.
I'll get it to you later. We had a late, we had a Friday meeting, cause of budget.
Uh, Ways and Means, uh, two oh five, Common Council, three thirty. Border Review, three twenty-five. Community of the Whole, six thirty. Public Works, two oh five. Public Safety, two oh five. Property Rec, two oh five. And Mayor's Salary, five fifty-five.
I motion for the bills as presented?
Second. Motion, a second to approve the bills, roll call. Where?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Anything else, uh, under general discussion? The last thing on the agenda I put on there was, uh, budget discussion. We got the budget numbers, uh, just before the budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, Rob had brought it up that we didn't have a whole lot of time to look them over. Uh, I don't know if anybody looked them over, I had a few questions on a few, uh, I talked to John a couple of times about these numbers. Uh, and basically, the way we're kind of setting right now, uh, like we discussed and like we approved, we really don't need to make any changes to it to have the, uh, accurate or the, the budget, um, the way we wanted it. We wouldn't need to cut because we're gonna levy for that, uh, the borrowing that we did. And we're still on the holdup, we still haven't gotten the manufacturing numbers from, uh, the state. Joe and I got an email this morning from John in regards to that and I, uh, I called Todd Falls this afternoon, he called, uh, Department of Revenue out of the Wausau office and we got a letter, Joe got a letter back in September with a number on it of what our assessment value should be, it's fairly close to last year's. Uh, hopefully, the, the numbers will come in by Friday so we can get those up to John so he can set the mill rate for next Tuesday night's meeting. Um, and hopefully we won't have to have, uh, any major cuts, it sounds like we're gonna be okay. Um, I mean, we did discuss that it would go up, the number would go up three point seven percent or something like that, which shouldn't affect the mill rate a lot, uh, but it still depends on where the manufacturing numbers come in. So, it, it sounds, where we gained on one of the evaluations, we lost on the other. Um, so I guess that's kind of where we're sitting right now. I mean, does anybody else have any questions on the budget? There was a few that I went through that I kind of had questions about and I talked to some of the department heads about them, um, so I pretty much got the answers I was after. So, I don't know if anybody else has any other questions on it, department heads or anything?
Just got it.
Well, I guess as long as there's no other discussion on it, we'll table it until Tuesday night and hopefully we'll have all the numbers crunched. Uh, Joe did talk to the county today and you said you didn't get all the information from them yet?
Uh...
You're missing part of it.
Well, we're, the, the levy certificate that they put out should be out by the end of the week.
Okay.
You know, so, uh, I think they had their meeting today, I believe.
Yeah, county board was disappointed.
Yeah, so, yeah, within a, within a couple of days.
Okay.
At the earliest, maybe they could fax it tomorrow or something, but, uh, they had to prepare those.
And it sounds like from what Todd was hearing from the gentleman at Department of Revenue, we're not the only municipality that's running into this issue with the state, it sounds like. Um, one portion of the Department of Revenue isn't talking with the portion that does the, the manufacturing assessments and there's, I thought he said there was over two hundred municipalities that are still in the same boat that haven't got their figures from them, like what we're sitting for. And then not only that, there's a bunch of them that are going through, uh, appeal processes because a lot of it has to do with paper mills, um, the cuts that they took in their assessed evaluations, so that's tying all of their, a lot of the times too, for the other municipalities and hopefully I think we're doing okay here. I haven't heard anything as far as they're appealing their, their evaluations, so, and Todd hasn't either, so it says I think we're doing okay here, so. Hopefully next Tuesday night we'll have the final numbers and we can crunch it and get it done with, so. Anybody have any other questions?
No, I think, you, one thing I think I talked to you about was like insurance differences between the different, is that kind of a...
I talked to John about it and, uh, where we're down on one, I think it, it got maybe bumped up in another department, but it should even itself out.
And, and we haven't had any, heard on, uh...
I ain't quotes back yet.
Um, there, the, our agents are working on that, there, uh, there are some rates that they're starting to assimilate and, uh, I think there's, uh, I think there's a report or something on paperwork, uh, that I gotta send them and we didn't quote yet, but it's coming, but it's slow and, uh, but then they were gonna put together a spreadsheet with some numbers on there, take a look at it.
They have an anticipation, I mean...
They didn't quote, they didn't quote me any price, even one pretty good, you know, so. I think most of the other questions, probably wait till the budget.
Yeah, John will be here that night too, so. If there's nothing else?
Move to Jerry.